Yes, please, actually, thank you. Did you see Jackie's button?
We are back in open session for one additional item. I will entertain a motion from the board. Dr. Mayberry Mays?
I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to allow the enrollment of the student who was the subject of the closed session in the district and further direct that the superintendent enroll the student in the DNPS Virtual Academy. The student shall not be permitted to be present on any DNPS property or attend any school activities during this placement. Further terms and conditions may be determined by the superintendent.
We have a motion by Dr. Mayberry Mays. May I have a second?
Marterano, second.
And a second by Ms. Marterano. Is there any discussion or questions? Board members, please cast your votes.
Ms. Dix?
Thank you.
We need to...
Ms. Alonso, do you abstain? It says here, let me...
While we fix that. The...
Do you want to try one more time? Yes, please.
You should be abstaining.
Okay. Okay.
Let me... One more time. Please vote.
The vote is approved five to zero with two abstentions. Thank you for joining us this evening. Sorry, it dropped a beat. Okay. Thank you for joining us this evening. Without objection, this meeting is adjourned at... 7:19. And we are going to go straight into budget conversation. That should be 10 minutes. And then we will move into our governance conversation. Okay? So, board members, to prepare for this, I'm going to ask you to call up. And if you can't find it, we'll find it together. The document that was a byproduct of the retreat that we did. And it was one of two memos that we shared with Dr. Roberts. One of them was around communications and one of them was around budget. And I thought I sent it out in the most recent back-to-school edition. Is it in there? Okay. And if it's not... Please let me know. Do you have it open, Patrick? Oh, okay. I can find it.
I can send it back to you.
Yeah, actually, that would be great. Sorry, team, I thought we...
All right. Oh, come on, board. It's coming up right now.
Thank you. All right, so Dr. Roberts is going to send it. So, just for the purposes of today's conversation, I think Dr. Roberts, Shashank, myself, Skylar, we've had conversations about the budget process and the board's desire to be more involved in the budget process and to start far earlier so topics can be researched and discussed. And so, not everything's jammed into March. And so, what I attempted to do based on the retreat was create a list of issues that had been elevated by the board. And what I'd like to do is, and I think a couple of people were involved in finishing it, I don't know, Patrick, if it was you, but what I'd like to do is call it up. I'm going to just highlight what we were looking for as a board.
Yep.
I think I want to make sure that we, as a board, are providing clear guidance to Shashank and Dr. Roberts. And I don't want to be responsible for doing that solely. So, this was really just an attempt to talk about, you know, board's fiduciary responsibility, commitment to make sure that there was collaboration in the budget development and monitoring process. The biggest thing for us was a request for a calendaring meeting to outline all the different decision points that need to take place, key milestones, so that the board could have an opportunity to be made aware. And I think, as we highlighted this, there were multiple conversations that we asked to elevate. But one was a conversation around the budget assumptions presentation, which have to do with staffing allocations. One was to do, whether it's department, division, or initiative presentations, potentially aligned with a strategic plan. So, how are we allocating dollars based on the strategic plan? We also asked for additional information on specific budgets that sometimes are unclear, Title I, DOP, SPED, Gifted and Talented, and ELL, and any other additional funding sources. And then, the guardrails budgets. So, not just looking at goal budgets, but the guardrails that are put in place, what's the spend on that as well? And then, the discretion authority between the principal and the superintendent and just how those decisions are made, based on kind of what criteria principals make decisions. And then, we also elevated the timeline around contract negotiation and dedicated sessions to look at tech investments, personnel cost efficiency, reimagining ed five-year projections, and long-term cost benefit analysis of retention versus recruitment and turnover. So, and then, quarterly budget performance, so kind of budget to actuals on a quarterly basis. So, that's a lot. But I think we'll start, that's what the board wanted and requested. And I think we want to hear how possible this feels, hear what questions you might have. And before I stop talking, I'll ask, board members, do you have anything you want to add before we hear from Shashank? You may have questions, or Dr. Roberts?
I think this just elevates a conversation we've been having for a couple of years now. And it, for me, this is about every year, going into this process and understanding the mechanics of it. How do we get to these decisions? So that when we get to a monitoring conversation and we say, there aren't enough resources or there are, we all know why that happened. And I think there's a disconnect right now with those conversations. So, for me, this is a little bit about what the budget process is every year. How do those decisions get made? You are the ones who make those decisions. But then, how do we take this list, and I think it is a really good list that reflects our conversations, and, you know, add some of these things in to make sure that we're highlighting specific areas that we monitor and that we are asking for the responsibility for as a board? So...
I think just one other thing that I would say, and you mentioned it, but, you know, part of this conversation is also, these operational decisions are Dr. Roberts' decisions. I think part of what we elevated was, how is the board notified and engaged ahead of time on some of the big milestones that often get announced in the community and to staff before the board? And so, part of this was understanding the cadence of how all of these things work. Last thing I'll say is, the other reason that this was elevated is, with all the different potential cuts, the federal level, state level, understanding the funding sources is going to be helpful to anticipate what may be in front of us over the next several years. Board members, any other comments? Okay. So, Shashank and Dr. Roberts, when you took a look at this, help us understand what feels possible, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to jump in, and then Shashank can certainly add. I want to share, there are three things that I'm hearing. Certainly, there's no disagreement at all from my perspective. One is, I think this process will now give the board much more visibility into our entire budget process throughout the year, and that will happen in a more timely manner. Secondly, this endeavor will really allow us to partner with the board to align on a calendar of budget discussions with a kind of frequency that allows many of the questions that tend to come up from you all in March or April to be answered during the course of the year. And thirdly, and probably of utmost importance to us, is what I'm hearing is the need for us to really refine how we look at costing. And then, this also allows us to truly calibrate on resource allocation, resource reallocation, to make sure that we are truly putting our money where our mouth is by looking at three things. One, are we budgeting in a manner that aligns to board goals and guardrails? Two, are we budgeting in a manner that aligns our five-year strategic plan? And then, thirdly, are we allowing some built-in flexibility to be able to come back to the board to say, look, now that we've monitored guardrail one, or goal one or two, we know that we've made a commitment for X number of dollars, this is not working for us because we've tried this for five years. And so, given us that, not just, we will have that flexibility as a management team, but it's giving you visibility into why and how we're making these decisions. Shashank?
Sure. It's a fairly good list of questions that the board has shared, yeah. And I have a few clarifications which I would need, and on others, I can say what our plan is. In general, I wanted to highlight the timeline, which the board has raised. Even though we come to the board, the first meeting actually happens with the board. If I'm looking at last year's calendar, it was November 26th. So, we come a lot earlier, but maybe not what the board is looking for.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, usually come with just a high-level, we might have to cut $14 million type of conversation, right?
Correct. Correct. So, we close and submit our financials to the state on September 15th. So, till such time, we have not closed the books, and we don't really know where the previous year is going to end. Also, in September is our first full-staffed payroll, because the contract year for the teachers are such. The schools opens up in late August, and September is the first full payroll. We leverage the September payroll as a base to say that this is the cost which is going to be there and build an increase, which Dr. Roberts and myself, we discuss, as to what is the district appetite to give an increase. What goes into that discussion, the fiscal reality is definitely a significant part. Neither he nor me wouldn't mind giving 5% increase, but unfortunately, we can't afford it. One of the things is fiscal reality, and the second is, I don't know what is the name of the new organization that has happened, is we used to have, in case the negotiations go into an impasse, based on the inflationary cost, we, if we go to arbitration, the arbitrator will decide a certain percentage based on the month when we are going to him for arbitration. So, we look at the forecast, which we have available, and at this point in time, the forecast that we're looking to is somewhere between 2.6%, 2.7%. So, we build our increase based on these factors. Fiscal reality, if we say 2% increase, the unions can always go for arbitration, and they would get, based on the CPI over there. Payroll is the single largest cost, which I think all of us understand and appreciate. The next thing is...
Can I just...
Sure.
I think my concern about talking with, about payroll first, is that there's, like, I just think about how I work. And so, you create the plan, and then you apply resources to the plan. And so, I guess I'm just trying to understand, where is the opportunity for conversation about whether or not we need that particular aspect of payroll?
And I think, yeah, and I think, I just think about our last conversation we had as a board with the cabinet, when I asked Peter LeBlanc, how do we become the top destination for teachers? What do we need? And so, I think some of those conversations around innovatively thinking about our budget, if our goal is to be a top destination for teachers, when does that happen? Like, that's not just going to happen with 2.7% figured in, right? So, like, where, when do those conversations happen in the timeline?
And that's really the district, that's kind of the strategic plan, district presentations, because it is, like, what do you want to accomplish, and then what are you going to get rid of to accomplish?
Exactly. So...
What does that happen?
If I can continue on this train of thought...
Okay. Yep.
Why am I talking about health cost and payroll cost? We have decided that we need to maintain our spending authorities the same as previous year. Last two years, we have leveraged our spending authority. Once we close the year, we'll have a better understanding. With these two costs being the single, I mean, the largest costs, we decide what could be the potential reduction. Now, besides these two things, we need to dial in, what is the impact of strategic plan? What is the cost of reimagined education? And all those different things. What are the new things? Teaching and learning have come that they want to change the curriculum. They want to invest in curriculum, which makes perfect sense. What is the impact? I need to start collecting in the month of October, November, what is the total impact? One is the payroll cost, giving certain amount. B is, what is it that we need to invest? Reimagine strategic plan, any other initiatives and things like that.
But how do those strategic conversations happen, right? So, I'm teaching learning, and I want new curriculum, and I want all of these things. How does that get from, this is what I want, to...
A recommendation.
Yeah, absolutely, yes, Madam Chair. So, yeah, thank you for that. And Shashank, I think I really appreciate the perspective you offer, and you're absolutely right. We must start with the largest expenditure.
Right.
Salary, payroll, benefits. But what I'm hearing the board ask for and disaligns, so what we've been talking about is, how do we ensure that we're really refining a system that allows us to spend, cost, allocate, reallocate resources? To the question that Jackie's asking, for example, using teaching and learning, when and how do we allocate resources? That is happening before the budget period, the budget is finalized.
Correct.
But during the course of the year, I think if we, once we create a calendar and collaboration with the board, if we calendar for us to have bimonthly budget discussions, then, board, you will have some visibility into, look, we've allocated $5 million for a new curriculum, but having piloted, we've decided, this is not a right curriculum. We are going to reallocate $4 million. And then, that allows you to access questions in November, December, as opposed to waiting until March or April. That sounds like I'm simplifying, but what I'm hearing is, how do we make sure that, one, they're not, they aren't going to be, and I've made this declaration publicly, with regards to our strategic plan, we aren't going to invest in any new initiatives for the next couple of years. The only thing that we are thinking about is, we have a five-year curriculum adaptation process that we're considering. But our teachers and leaders are suffering from initiative fatigue from the last several years. So, what we have right now is a really robust and well-thought-out strategic plan, board goals and guardrails, that certainly will be tweaked annually when you go out into the community. But for the most part, I think we can continue to come to you with, here's where we're allocating our resources. I think that's what I'm hearing the board is asking, and how are we doing that frequently?
And just being okay sharing trade-offs. I mean, part of this whole conversation is, there are trade-offs. And you get to make those decisions.
Sure.
And it's helpful, though, for the board to understand how you're moving in that direction, how you got there. So, you know, at a high level, right? So, because you may want all of these things, but you can't afford them.
Certainly.
And so, things may be cut.
And to Shashank's point, I think, I appreciate the fact that there are some moving pieces here that I think in the past have been challenges to do what you'd like to do, which is present a comprehensive picture of the budget for us, without giving us information that might change based off the moving pieces that come in. And I appreciate that. Where are the pieces in our budget that we could start with first that are not moving pieces? We know how many buildings we have. We can give a relatively good guess as to how many students we're going to have, and we hope we have more. But, and I think we know that we want to have most of the programs that we have. We want to continue those. There are a lot of things we're going to do again. How do we get those off the board first? And I know the big question is payroll, I totally agree. And that's where you're going to find the most efficiency, if you want to, if you wanted to do that. But where could we get out of the way with some of this budget stuff that is just the known? And then, move in as we get more information, that calendar then moves us into, after we get past September 30th, after we get past November 1st, whatever it is, that gives us an idea about payroll and some of these other things. So, I think you could still build a process where we get the knowns out of the way first, get the variables later, but not too late, so that we can make some of those decisions.
So, I thank you. I have two clarifying questions. Madam Chair, after you.
No, I was just going to say, I think we should stop talking and actually let you ask clarifying questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, dear. Two that comes to mind for me. One is, Shashank, if you have that information at your fingertips, I want to get a sense of, for the board, so we can align, our current process, how often do we have budget presentations for the board?
So, historically, we have done at a minimum one per month between November and April. And there are times when we have even two meetings.
I think the difference is what's being presented. It's not about how many, it's about the quality and content of the conversation. That's what's missing.
Very helpful, Madam Chair. So, again, we'll make that adjustment. And then, my second sort of clarifying question is, what is the level of granularity with which the board will want to understand? How and how, how and what are we spending money, right? How granular, how deep into the operations or the management would the board want to see? Or is it more high level? Or should we make that decision at a different date?
I'll speak for myself, and maybe each board member's different. I don't need to be in the weeds, but I need to hear strategy and have strategy aligned with what we've been being told you've needed for the last year. And so, I think we're looking for clear understanding. We're, I think we're listening more for understanding and alignment of all of the conversations we regularly have at this table.
Thank you.
Well said.
I would echo those comments. The piece I would add is, back to Jackie's point earlier, I think what's most important for me is understanding the trade-offs. So, if there are decisions that are made that we're either removing programs or adding programs, that directly impacts student outcomes, I'd be interested in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would, I would offer, I agree, Jenna, with one small tweak. I believe that as a board, we should be hearing the strategies as a part of the monitoring conversation. And then, in the budget conversation, we should see the allocation of resources to implement that strategy. So, it's not a question of the strategy in the budget conversation. The strategy questions are happening in that monitoring conversation. And then, we walk away from that monitoring conversation feeling confident that we've chosen the right strategy, and then we're allocating resources to that. And I would also offer, I wouldn't make assumptions about, about the, we're going to, the must-haves. And, you know, one of the things that we've been hearing for quite some time is we, the thing that you need more of, and we've heard it in many monitoring conversations, is we need more time. Well, we can't put more hours on the calendar, but what can we do? Does more time mean making sure that teachers have the ability to leave their classroom and making sure that subs are in place so that they can leave their classroom for a robust professional development around the curriculum that we have set as the strategy that is being implemented to reach that goal? You know, those are the things that I want to see, is, we're going to allocate this amount of money, so we can give more time to those teachers, so we can have space for subs to come in. So, I want to start with, what strategies are going to get us to reaching these goals and honoring these guardrails? And then, let's put our money where those strategies lie. And also, what is it, what do we have to give up in order to put money into the strategies that we've identified in monitoring are going to get us to reaching that goal? So...
Dr. Roberts, other questions? Shashank, other thoughts? Is that helping? You can keep asking questions, but is this helping a little bit?
It is. It is.
And I think, you know, one of the things that we've talked about, Dr. Roberts, is, it doesn't always have to be you doing the budget, right? In terms of the, you know, the content of the budget. So, if it makes more sense for your cabinet or you to be talking about the budget expenditures, because sometimes we put Shashank in the, in the hot seat on things that...
He shouldn't be answering strategy.
Yeah, he shouldn't be answering questions that maybe are better left to yourself or other members of your team.
Absolutely. And particularly, you know, and I really appreciate board member Marterano's comments, we're likely going to hear an unpacking of strategies and the alignment of costs during our monitoring meetings, because at every monitoring meeting, goal or guardrail, there are individuals who are closest to the work that will be sitting at the table with me, talking through why we made the strategic decisions we made and what we're allocating or reallocating. So, while Shashank will certainly provide a comprehensive overview, if we can agree and align on having those much more in-depth and granular discussions during monitoring, I think we'll be in a good place.
I think, to answer your question, because I think you asked, how much in the weeds? I want to make sure, I think what I'm hearing is high level, but understanding how strategies are being funded to increase student outcomes and trade-offs. So...
Yeah, I would add a comment also around, it is not necessarily for the budget presentation, but just, I think, the appetite of the board, being innovative in the budget and being comfortable doing things that maybe we haven't done before. And I really appreciated in the meeting earlier, although I know it's probably not universally comfortable, but the selling of the radio station, there are some that like it, some that don't, but the reality is, times are different. And having the fastest-growing podcast in the nation, maybe that's the alternative to having a radio station. And I think having some of those conversations and being able to say, we don't maybe need this the same way we used to have it. So, I think to Kim's point even earlier, some things that we've had budgeted before don't always have to get added to the budget next year. And I think being comfortable and seeing that in the budget presentations and conversations would be appreciated.
I would also, I agree completely. I would encourage the staff, though, to ensure that there's sort of evidence or supporting understanding as to why, if we're changing, you know, why. Like, and I think there was really, and Neil did a really great job of explaining, you know, enrollment and the reason why we're pivoting strategies.
So, another thing, just to call out, the budgets for Title I dropout prevention, all of those, I think you could treat those as education sessions, and I think you can use the past year's numbers. But I think these topics come up pretty regularly about choices that are being made and... and that can almost be treated as education. Do board members agree with that? So that doesn't have to be very tied to this next coming budget as opposed to teach us about the funding sources and help us understand if we're spending more on SED and things like that, how that all works.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. We've talked about that. Some of the information that we will share will not necessarily be one that is sort of showing you the technical aspects of the budget, but it's more informational and educative, such as, you know, how and why do we reallocate title spending? Additionally, where do we have principals who lead a discretion? Right? So we can certainly talk you through what that looks like for your own enlightenment.
I'm gonna try and wrap this up, but I want to make sure, Shashank, this is...
I just want to say one other thing on that, and this is maybe a personal thought around some of these bucketed dollars. But also, how are we being intentional about spending it and ensuring that it's reaching and being spent for a maximum impact on the students it's intended to be spent on? I feel like sometimes we have, I know you came in and you had some money left, and we have money left, and we have money left, like, how do we, how are we being mindful about ensuring we're using everything to its full potential?
Yes, ma'am. We'll be able to certainly share that with you. I can tell that in the past three years, there's a team, the federal programs team, that have done an amazing job of ensuring that we are truly utilizing the spend down and utilizing resources to truly meet the needs of students. One of the reasons why there are only two of our 64 schools that are not receiving Title I funds, right? Again, we pivoted in terms of the model, so we'll make sure we provide you all with that information as well.
Great. Shashank?
So I know last year, when we were presenting the information on goals and guardrails, the board did not feel very comfortable with the information that was being shared. What is it that we need to do different? So one is what Kim laid out, that as part of the monitoring report, we have those strategic discussions, and that gets aligned. Is it, because this, the goals and guardrails is something which we will definitely have our business partners, like Teaching and Learning Group, presenting along with me, because anything related to strategy, future, anything, they would be bringing it. I would be bringing in more numbers. But is there something different that you're looking for? Because I thought that was one thing which the board felt fairly uncomfortable last year.
There's no context usually when it's presented, Shashank, so I'll speak for myself. So giving us like spoon-feeding, like, this is a goal, this is a guardrail, this is the money, no perspective. What is that in the context of a very large budget? And so I think my struggle with that is there's just no context given. And so that doesn't work for me personally, but I'll let other people speak.
Part of it is storytelling. We have these monitoring reports, to Kim's point. And so now we have heard part of our struggle is a resource allocation issue. Show, just take the monitoring reports and make that a part of the budget presentation. We have shown you in our monitoring reports, these are our barriers, and we have reallocated these dollars to Skylar's point, and this is the trade-off. It's, I think that's the sort of one, two, three.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna push this a little bit, because I'm listening to you, and I'm thinking about the conversations we've had. And I think we want more than goals and guardrails. Like, I mean, let's just, like, own it a little bit. If you, because my sense is, you also, we have interest in wanting to know if we have arts programming. And so I'm just, I think at one point, the answer was, Shashank, and I can't remember the schedule that is, I think I had given it to the two of you, that one of the other public schools, it's the full budget, right? I mean, we should see the full budget with all the categories. So that's, that's a good example of context. There's lots of different ways to do that, but if you think about it, the board never actually receives a full budget to look at, which even at a high level, probably is a good practice for us to look at.
I would say, in the scope of goals and guardrails, I think part of it was budget. I can't attribute all of it to being, budget being the issue, though. I do think there was probably some gaps in board knowledge and just understanding in general of what roles do. And I think more recently, the process has helped with that. I recall a board meeting in particular where one of the recommendations was having a particular role help out with that. And I think there was an understanding from the board where they thought they understood what that role actually does in the schools, which is very different what that role actually does. But I think oftentimes, we sometimes will say, it's the budget that's the problem, because we're not seeing the allocation. So I think part of it is budget, but I do think part of it is also just the context and the story, the narrative around how some of the recommendations have come before. But I do think the more recent conversations in, goals and guardrail conversations have addressed some of that.
Thank you.
I feel like, for whatever reason, there's a misnomer and that the budget presentation is to almost prove how much of our budget is allocated towards the goals and the guardrails. And so it feels like the approach the last year or beyond has just been to put as many things as we can in the buckets to show our huge investments in our goals and guardrails. And I'm less concerned with that and more concerned with actual strategies that are, you know, not all of our teaching and learning time, because that's not all going towards one goal, towards literacy, but more on like the specific strategies that we are investing in that are towards that goal. So if there's a specific training for our staff, and they're using their teaching and learning time or something in that way, then yes, that could be allocated. But I don't think our entire teaching, you know, teacher's budget should be going into achieving goal number one. I think maybe there's a disconnect, I've felt a disconnect there in some of the ways that's been presented.
And I'm just gonna, I think, this might actually be a good stopping point, because I also want to say that I think when we came on the board, the guidance that was given to, I think Superintendent Smith at the time, and then to Shashank, was very much that proved the case of goals and guardrails. So I think part of our conversation actually next is going to really dig into that a little bit. And I think what you can expect is a hunger for more than just like make the case on goals and guardrails. So, is that fair, Jenna? Is that fair assessment? Yes. Okay. All right. We'll wrap this piece up, and then we'll move to board governance.
Thanks, board. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would actually, as closing, really appreciate to give us feedback after the budget sessions, whether it is on different programs, whether it's on costing, whether it is on budget reduction or whatever portion it is, so that we can continuously improve it and help the board come on same page that we are on. Because we are thinking we are doing what the board asks, but apparently are missing it somewhere. So I'm very open to any feedback that the board is willing to give, so that we can continue to improve the process.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So we are going to move into our working session on governance. And I think Rosie has copies, and people are willing to, they're wonderful to stay. Dr. Roberts, we gave them the choice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll exercise that desire for an early night and enjoy dinner. Thank you, Rosie, for your generosity. Cabinet, please, if you have an appetite for the governance conversation, please stick around, but I expect to see you bright and early in the morning.
And I, I think, just, you know, Jenna's comment is actually a really good one, and maybe dovetails into, into where we're going, which is, you know, what the governance model, what parameters governance model set? So...
Are we, are we in, are we in a work session?
No. We're now in a work session on board governance.
So we've adjourned, have we been?
Yes.
It's been adjourned for a while.
Or in a second work session.
Yeah.
Second order. Got it.
You guys good?
Superb. Yeah.
Okay. So this is something that we have to spend some time and energy on, which is board governance. I think, well, that's not what we said, actually. No, I didn't. So, and look, I'm in this for all of us, so don't give me a time limit unless you want to take over, okay?
Unless you want to do this again.
Yeah, unless you want to do this again. So what I would say is that I'm reflecting on the retreat. At the retreat, what I heard from everybody was that we wanted to evolve from SOFG governance and that we wanted to try some other approaches. And so based on that, we took the board governance manual, and I attempted to take some of the things that were very important that the board did not have any, feel like they had any power or oversight over, and tried to reflect those. At the same time, I think what Kim rightly did, so I took the first pass, and then what Kim did was look at this and say, okay, you've really got three governance manuals in this manual. Sorry, three forms of governance in this manual. So there's a little SOFG, there's a little govern, policy governance, there's a little IASB, you know, board as operations. And so what we thought would be a good opportunity is for Kim to just explain to us the three different types of governance that is reflected in this document, and so we can have a conversation about it. Make sure that, you know, we kind of know the general direction that we want to go in, so then we can go through some specific requests and changes in the board governance manual and make sure they align with what we're trying to accomplish in board governance. Does that generally make sense? Everybody good? And I don't mean to be cranky, but this is, yeah, thank you. The intended outcome is that Kim takes us through the three models that are reflected in this manual, that we either decide we're going to be a three-blended model and own it and make sure that we feel like we have...
Be innovative and new?
Be innovative and new, exactly. And that the things that have changed in the manual, the big things, and there's, you know, we'll see how far we get, but there's 10. Do they reflect our governance approach that we've just decided on?
Or not adopting anything?
No. Our endpoint would be that we will have this done and approved no later than October.
Got it. Let's go.
So as I was reviewing some of the recommended changes and some of the red lines, I was really struggling because in one breath, we were very much on the side of being student outcomes-focused. And then in the next breath, we were more focused on management and operations. And then, you know, it was just toggling back and forth a lot. So it was difficult for me, as I read through some of the recommendations and changes, to not have an understanding of where we as a board want to, what is our desired state? So I, I kind of broke out the SOFG, student outcomes focus, policy governance, and IASB recommendations, which really is not a governance style. It's just their best-practice recommendation as the state of Iowa, into three separate categories, and really tried to identify the areas where we are making those changes and where we were leaning in hard on. And so just as a high level, you know, with student outcomes-focused governance, the main driver is, of course, improving student outcomes. Policy governance is more, you know, the main driver is governance theory and the way in which a governing body should govern. Whereas IASB recommendations tend to fall in line with whatever the state law and requirements are. So just making sure that boards are following the law. With SOFG, they're, you know, the student outcomes are the North Star. The board sets the vision and values, sets the goals and the guardrails, and we monitor the superintendent's progress towards achieving the goals and honoring those guardrails. And a lot of the other things are left for the superintendent's oversight. So in this model, it is the board and the superintendent have the understanding that all decisions that are going to be made align with meeting the goals and honoring the guardrails, and then we as a board monitor that that's actually what's happening. Whereas with policy governance, the board sets ends and means, which are very similar to goals and guardrails. They're a little bit, they're less restrictive, I'll say. It is very much a strategic, results-centered, it sets boundaries for the superintendent. There's still monitoring that's happening.
It's broader than just student outcomes.
It's broader than just student outcomes. We, as a board, had a bit of a mixture of this back in 2020. We had goals from student outcomes-focused governance, and we had management limitations, which were policy governance-led. So we were kind of a hybrid approach. Whereas the IASB is really focusing on oversight. It's focusing on operations, it's focusing on policy compliance versus achievement and ends and student outcomes. So what, I'll stop there. What questions do you have regarding kind of those three?
Does Miriam review this? Okay. So this reflects all your edits, all your edits, Kim, and Miriam's edits?
Okay.
So let me say, let me take that back. I did the first pass. Miriam did the second pass. Then Kim looked at it. Depending upon some decisions we make, we have to bring it back to her.
Are there pieces in here that Miriam adamantly says need to stay? Just suggested places?
That's a super-high-level conversation. I think I'd have to look, like, in the specifics, Jenna, to see, like, there's a lot of stuff about policy that is being added to this.
Right, because I feel like it was nowhere, right? That's like, a lot of this review was that there were a lot of pieces of policy that are nowhere. So I guess I'm also trying to understand, is this solving for those pieces that have...
Here's maybe where the difference, maybe where we need to get some clarity, and I'll do my best. There's board policy.
Right.
And which historically was called district policy.
Right.
Board policy is the policy that is set by state code to govern DNPS, right? Kim, am I doing okay? The focus on policy that we've been talking about is, a lot of, that board policy was not cascading, and it wasn't aligned, and that that was a problem. And district policy, there is no such thing as district policy. So this, this is, think of this more as your standard operating procedure. So if we have a new board member, and they say, how do you work? We hand this to them. This is how we work. So if none of us were here, this is how it goes, right? And so I would, in this, Jenna, under SOP, there are a couple of specific places where we say the superintendent, on an annual basis, must, I don't know, certify that he has made sure that all handbooks are compliant with board policy, as an example. So there are certain things that we are, expectations that we're setting for the superintendent that are not necessarily just based on performance, that are based on proof of compliance.
So I think about, like, our board, prior to us, set in policy that we will negotiate with the union on anything, despite state law. Is that in this document?
Yes.
So those pieces have been brought in?
So they've been brought in. I think we have to discuss them. But yes, they've been brought in. So just, I want to just stay up high in the weeds for just a little bit longer. Because, I mean, I, Kim, I want, I don't want to put you on the spot. I want you to just at least give the pros or cons with a blended model. Because we're, by all accounts, this is a blended model, and I think that's where people want to be. So let's say out loud either the pros and cons, or are we on a pathway to get somewhere over the next three years?
You know, the pros... You know, the pros? That is not, I'm just trying to... No, no. The, I think, let me start with an example of what, what we just heard from the superintendent and team tonight in the budget process. I think, you know, living in a very specific model is going to create clarity, and on both ends. The Board will have clarity on, on expectations. The superintendent and team will have clarity on expectations. Again, regardless of which we choose, we will codify those expectations and we will know. The, the trouble with living in, in two areas, I think, is, you know, Shashank was given a directive to, to show me how we are going to meet our goals and honor our guardrails in the budget process. Like, this particular budgeting process was celebrated across the country. They went to various conferences and, and reported out on the previous ways that, that DNPS was doing their budget process. And that was the, the clear directive that the Board gave him. And we've transitioned into, we had this clear directive and now we have a, a new Board. And that's okay, too, that the, this Board wants something new. But we've not codified in our Governance Manual truly what that looks like. And so we've been saying, we're, we're student outcomes focused. They've been producing documents that align with that student outcomes-focused recommendation. But as a Board, as a whole, we've not been happy with it. But there's nothing to align with saying, "This is truly what we want." Is that responsive? Or is, when I say...
My continuing frustration with that is that a pure student outcomes-focused model assumes that it, it does not allow us the visibility into the choices. And so I can't say whether this is truly going to get us to our goal as fast as we can. Because I don't know what the other, I don't, I don't know what the rest of the picture looks like. I'm given a quarter of a snapshot because it's about one focused thing. And to my point earlier, there are things in our budget that we have to do every year. That, like, we have to, we own the buildings. And so, so my, my problem with it is, I'm not being given a broad enough, and maybe it's a, just an education when you get on the Board, but we're not given a broad enough view every year to see whether we truly can and should, yes, we are relentlessly for student outcomes. That is not always the prudent choice. Like, we could put all our money into reading. Nobody's going to do that because it's ridiculous. And so I, I, my problem with it is, we can't see the whole picture. How do you do, how do you do, "I am for student outcomes"? How do you do that without being only getting a part of the picture?
Well, I think, to me, listening to you, that lends itself to evolving from SOFG. But to a governance, I mean, the, the ends and means, it's, it's, it's kind of the same thing. Your parameters are broader. Your parameters are, it can be operations, it can be student outcomes, right?
Right.
Now, even within that framework of ends and means, there's discipline.
Right.
And I think, I think the question is the discipline.
Yeah.
And whether or not some of the things we're talking about here that we've expressed we would like adhere to the discipline.
Right.
I think, and I, I have to say something just because I have to get going here in 12 minutes. But I think...
For me, it would be really helpful to be able to, like, I, I like a certain part of student outcomes. I like it that, you know, that's our North Star. Because it should be, students should be our focus, right? But I also would like to have some, the ability to see a little bit beyond with better clarity without feeling like I'm, I'm doing something wrong. Like, I am getting in trouble because I'm wording something wrong or because that's superintendent work and I'm not allowed to know or to ask, much less to ask. So maybe be able to know more granular areas, or areas, get to know about areas in a more granular form or, or sense. But being able to have still our North Star.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't want this to be a, I don't want this to be a, necessarily a conversation about, you know, just student outcomes-focused governance and, and...
Well, it kind of is, though, if we're, because I feel like the decision we're making tonight, we're codifying that we're evolving and we will no longer be in the way that it's defined student outcomes-focused governance.
And so, and a lot of what I'm hearing, though, are are misconceptions about the framework or about the requirements or about how it should be. And so that's why it's difficult for me to respond. Because there's, there's no question that, as a Board member, you can't ask in this governance framework. It's just how and when, or not how you ask it, it's when you ask it. And the budget presentation, it's not, you know, you're not only supposed to get the alignment with goals and guardrails, you can get other information. But ultimately, the, the main presentation, the main thing that we're voting on is how are we going to meet these goals while honoring these guardrails? But there can also be additional information provided that would show us those sorts of things. So I, so that's why it's difficult for me to speak to some of these things. Because there's, there's preconceived notions and assumptions about how it should be or, and even how it has been.
I've been on the Board four years, and I think the last year has been the most satisfactory for me as far as feeling like we're getting traction and making movement in the right way. And I think a lot of that is our superintendent and his wonderful work that he's doing. But I think that we are on a really good trajectory. And so I, I feel very comfortable if, I would like to review this. But if this reflects what we've been living for this last year, I feel like we are doing a really stellar job. And I think, I think we're on, we are the evidence that we can, we can adapt and evolve and, and meet the needs with our superintendent in our district in a perhaps unique way. So that would be, my, my recommendation would be that we move forward in sort of codifying this hybrid world that we've been living in for the last year.
And I, if I can just maybe add to that, Jenna. It, it feels more comfortable to me to work the way we have worked the last year. Because I'm not, I don't feel so, I don't feel like we're working with a super rigid model. It, it allows for, you know, deeper questions, more meaningful questions. Whereas I think SOFG is, I, I feel like it's very prescribed. And, you know, you have to ask at a certain time in this manner. And otherwise, you know, wait until, you know, later. And I like the flow of what we've been doing. Like Jenna said, this last year, I feel like with also Dr. Roberts being or agreeing, you know, that he does want to hear from us. And that it's important to know what it is that we exactly want to hear without having to be worried about how you are going to verbalize your question. It just, to me, it takes off a huge burden, just the pressure. And it allows for me to feel like things just flow better. Like, the information that you get, to me, I feel it's more meaningful. But that's just, I mean, that's just me.
So can I ask a question? One of the things that I think I hear as a, a sort of a warning in everything we've learned about SOFG is, it's a slippery slope, right? And this Board works. But governance models, governments, governance frameworks are not for one Board. They're for the, they're for the long term. And so the rules have to apply long-term for this to really work, for outcomes to really work. What are the, what are some guardrails, not guardrails, like, in the traditional sense? But what are some things we could put in place in our policy that would help remind us and future Boards that the intent of this is always to focus on student outcomes while recognizing the value that the Board brings in raising questions that could ultimately make the entire system better? That might be outside those specific goals and guardrails, but, but could be in service to the whole and making the whole district better. There's got to be a way to thread that needle, that you could put something in the policy that would give it the...
Don't call it policy, if that's okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Just call it, it's like our standard operating procedure.
The governance, right. That would make sure that we have that while, I think, maintaining the flexibility that Maria is talking about and gives us the ability to pivot in really challenging times.
I think that's what we've been doing. I think we have been operating under a student outcomes revised governance anyways. And I think if there was a fancy name for what we were already doing, I think people would be maybe more comfortable with it. But the fact that we're calling this a blended model and stuff is what's causing kind of tension or whatever this is.
I don't think there's tension. I think there's a need to...
I don't want to contradict ourselves from one statement to another in the manual itself. And that's where we, I was running into some concern is, we had a statement that was very much like an IASB recommended statement. And then not even three paragraphs later, it was like a policy governance statement, and they just contradicted each other. So I, I don't want to get in this, this system of one page says one thing and the next page says another and has a completely different feel.
Well, I mean, that's an editing issue. So like, if this is an editing issue, we can fix the editing issue.
Can you show me an example of what you, like?
I think it's good to go through it. I mean, at some point, we have to go through and get those things.
I wrote it, so, but that's an editing issue.
Yeah, we don't want to have contradictory things.
Can we, Kim, I think, though, Kim, the, the thing that, that Skylar's saying, because I feel like the whole reason that we're trying to move this forward is, we, I thought, had consensus that we were evolving from the pure SOFG model.
We do.
And so if we have consensus with that, then we have to do our best to try and codify where we are now. And the reason for that is we have four Board members up for election, right? And that's the prudent thing to do. So when and if you have new Board members, it's clear, clearer. So I think the question for this group is, is, do we, do we try and kind of have an overarching paragraph around a blended model, right? Or do we, you know, kind of read through this? And not everybody, we can have a small group, read through this and look for those places where maybe there's contradictions or a lack of clarity? And just fix those in, I, I just, I need a little help on where to go next. Because Jenna actually reminded me, there's a few things that aren't in here that we probably need to talk about, that are more like management limitations, so.
I think a small group is appropriate to look and make sure there aren't contradictions and that we are including things that we want to make sure are included. But I do think we, we have to evolve beyond a sole SOFG while still honoring that we want to monitor goals and that student outcomes is the focus.
Okay, so that's, that's really just saying our highest priority. Let's just say it's a governance model. Were you calling it policy? I can't remember what you. Let's just call it the ends and the means, right? But what we're saying is, the most important thing that we will always do is put student outcomes front and center. And that means those are the reports that we will monitor on a regular basis. So you're just, you're putting emphasis on those things, but you're enabling other things to be monitored. But you're still having a monitoring process, right? So you're keeping some of the practices that I think people liked around monitoring. Is that right, generally? I'm just looking for consensus.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm going to suggest then, then, why don't we take just 10 or 15 minutes to, for me to highlight just a few questions that are worthy? I feel like we're going to go from super high to super detailed, but just bear with me. Because, because it's in, it's in some of the gray that we need just to get this stuff moving forward. Just, you know, what I decided to do is, the Governance Manual, I think, honestly, when I stepped into the chair role, I, there was no, there was nothing, right? And so, just in terms of like how it all works. So what I try to do on the back few pages, and they have to be built out, is actual addendums, like how to make a Board Information Request, how to, you know, like an annual planning, you know, calendar template. A lot of these stuff were in the manual, but it's almost like we're separating out a how-to guide. So if you're a Board member, how to do this? How to pull something from consent? How to elevate Board member concerns? So I tried to, I, I don't know if this works or not.
I think that's honestly really great, because I reflect on a lot of things I learned just because Terry told me I could do them. Not because they were written anywhere, but because she would be like, "Here is what you can do and here is how you do that." We were sort of just passing things down a lot word-of-mouth in that way.
And, and/or it was in the Governance Manual, but it was hard, it wasn't clear. So let's, let me just, we'll just flip the page and I'll just start with some high-level things. So, you know, and, and you can see that there's, there's a lot of highlighting and additions and things like that. We tried to, I think, keep our edits clear, so you could see the edits that were made. The first one, that purpose of the manual, probably is important for us to all read and, and think about that. I had, I don't remember what I wrote, but it is, "Why does this manual actually exist?" We've got a vision and a mission, which are the ones that the Board passed. On page three, the Governance Commitment. Again, I think this is the place to read. And so why don't we just take a few minutes on page three at the bottom, Patrick? It says Governance Commitment. And let's read this and get a little feedback on this.
You've had a chance to read that 2.0 Governance Commitment.
Yes.
It's feedback.
I think that says pretty well what we're after.
Yeah, honestly, I, I'm thinking in my head, as a new Board member coming in with no experience at all on boards. And I think you want it more to flow or to be understandable for anybody. And this breaks it down perfectly.
General, general consensus, I think it looks good. The only thing I did have a slight concern with was around the staff piece, where it says staff that reside in the district. I do think staff has to be broader. There are staff that do not reside.
So this was actually, I know, I, Miriam, this is a Miriam's edition, so, because I had staff and...
Staff that reside are also just residents, I mean...
Yeah, yeah.
I think it should be staff of, not resident.
Yep. I have a question specifically about, and we're going to use, the perfect example is the labor piece. So what we're saying is, like, here are the documents that guide us. Student outcomes, which are our goals, management limitations, which are our guardrails. We set expectations for our superintendent. So think about the, and we have to decide what we're going to call them. Like in the evaluation, Skylar, what did you call those?
Superintendent expectations.
So do we want to call them that? Or do we want to call them, Kim, you had an idea, operational excellence? We, I just need to know what we want to call them.
Yeah, we used operational excellence two plus years ago.
Superintendent expectations makes it clear that that's who we are accountable, or who's accountable to us.
Okay, so, so that is the things that we would see in the evaluation form, right? Then there's this gray area here, which is, um, the manage, the labor as an example, like the...
And the spending authority.
And spending authority. There's things like that which were stricken.
Someone, yeah, the board prior to us pass them. And then we took them out when we went SOFG, and then they never got put anywhere else.
So the, the question is, should they be guardrails, right? So, I mean...
Or are we done with them?
I don't think we're done, I mean...
I mean, I'm just saying, it's worth like a convert, I just think it's worth like an evaluation.
Yeah, so let's take, well, I mean, let's take the example of the, the conversation about bargaining, right? So we, we reaffirmed and we kept our commitment to the process regardless of what chapter 20 says. And so...
The board did, yes.
The board did, thank you. And so where do we state that? And is that a, that is an expectation of the superintendent? It's just like having a succession plan is an expectation of the superintendent, just like being clear about spending authority. So, so there are these things that you could call them guardrails, you can...
They're shell nuts, that's what you're after?
Yeah, yes, we need to figure out what category they fit in. Because they're, they're demands, basically. Like they're dictates, they're mandates, call them whatever the right word is. But this is what we expect of the superintendent.
And they're not board policy.
Well, see, this is where it gets...
Standard operating procedures.
So think board policy is code 200, 300, 400, 500 on the website. But some of it can't, we, some of it can be board policy if we want it to be board policy. I, I'm over my skis a little bit with this. Some of it can just be, it's the process, right? So it's how we operate, the relationship between the board and the superintendent is, uh, is a, like a standard operating procedure.
I guess what I'm trying to get clarity on is the boards set these policies. So either we are going to continue to own them or we are leaving it up to the superintendent to choose whether he is going to continue it in his policies. Is that...
So the board policies, I mean, if you look at the series, I don't have them opened up, but we're talking about high level state of Iowa board policies, right? So, Rosie, you're in a position to be able to give examples. So I don't know that, would we expect, and I'm looking at Kim, because maybe she knows, to see spending authority on the superintendent in published board policy?
I feel like it's on there.
No.
May I offer?
Yeah.
That since we're doing hybrid, why don't we just have goals, guardrails, and management limitations? And the management limitations are the things that, once a year, we want to see a report. It's not going to be a monitoring report, but something that says, yes, we are, we are bargaining, yes.
It's like dictates.
Yes, we are within our, our spending authority range, yes, we are. So I will say the, the thing that got a previous board hung up is we would get a management limitation monitoring report, and it would be 23 pages long, none of which was smart, and we never knew if it was really, if we were really honoring that limitation or not. So if we're making this up, why not just do goals, guardrails, and management limitations? And we'll have three separate sections.
I'd be fine with that. So we're just not using management limitations synonymously with guardrails anymore?
So with the management limitations, is that going to be part of our superintendent review? Is those are the questions? Like, will we ask him during his review?
I'm going to suggest, oh, thanks, that we, I'm going to sit with Miriam, and if two other people are willing to do it with me, just to get clarity on how to do this. Because, you know, Jenna, you look at series 200 on the Board of Directors. Some things, it, this is, this is pointing to a broader issue that we know we have, which is policy continuity from top to bottom. And so I think what we do is capture exactly this, right? And, and then I sit down with Miriam and say, what do we do? So, so to that point, okay, let's, some of, some of the outstanding questions then are how we govern ourselves. So I have a few questions about that. And then some of the questions are in the, I need a better word than dictates, the mandates that we're giving to Dr. Roberts, the directives, right? Which isn't the best word, that's management limitations. So if we go to, um, page five, at the bottom, the superintendent's role, again, you'll see there's a lot of different words being used because we don't know what the heck we're doing, but that's going to be blended. I think the policy review, what we don't, so I just wrote, the superintendent is responsible for developing a process to ensure entire board policy manual is comprehensively reviewed on an annual basis. And a specific DNPS member of the superintendent's executive cabinet is primarily responsible for leading the process, et cetera. That is basically saying, we just want to know it got done. And part of the reason we're saying that is because it hasn't historically gotten done. Is that a, now a management limitation? I'm sorry, is this a directive? What did you say we were going to call them? Yeah, is this a management limitation? What is this? Because it's just proof, did it get done or not?
Yeah, I think it's a management limitation.
Yes.
So I think maybe as I'm listening to this, it, I don't know how this could work, but it's, it'll be helpful maybe to call out, like, here's, here's the management limitations. These are the directives. And some of this stuff doesn't necessarily have to be in our standard operating procedure, maybe. Okay, so let's look at, we're going to skip page six. I just want to point out, this is the piece that Miriam's really digging in on. And, and basically, it's, you can see, there's board, so standard operating procedure for the board, that's just a separate thing. Think of that as a process manual. The board policy that's on the website, everything underneath that, the administrative regulations, everything has to cascade from that. Miriam added this, I'll read through it. But the most important point is that we know it got done. That's what we're asking for as a board. And so that's the management limitation, that there is confirmation it got done. So all of this stuff might be taken out, I'm not sure yet. I think other things of significance, because some of these are bigger than others. On page 10, the superintendent evaluation. So we've always struggled with our calendaring, with our superintendent evaluation. And we're not the only district. It's just, it's especially hard when you have a new superintendent and you're trying to adhere to contract deadlines and things like that. So in talking to Miriam, the, well, I, I put in writing that we have an evaluation committee, which hadn't been in writing before. Then I put that, um, the framework's got to be, you know, provided to the superintendent by June 30th, evaluation template, what it should include. I think the summative evaluation is where we got, we always get tripped up. So our meeting in, we might have to have a conversation with Dr. Robert. His, his, his contract asks for notification by a certain date. And that is different than the timing that we've been doing our summative evaluation.
Yep.
And so I think that we're going to try and find a blending of how to both be able to adhere to the contract and feel like we have enough time to provide a summative evaluation. But it may be that that summative evaluation is kind of like, that's the big one. The summit evaluation is the big one that would take place in March. And so I, I, I need help on this one, kind of how to write it, how to think about it. Miriam may have to help us because it's connected to his contract as well. But I'm calling out that we need to do something better because it's been pretty clunky to date. I keep in there, I put that we're going to do for formative discussions. I think that's been a good practice that we brought. Let's see, other big things. I think on page 11, superintendent professional development. Again, this is a, is this a management limitation now? What is this? Is this something that would in the future? Miriam also said things can go in a contract, too, right? So it's, if, if we as a board are prioritizing professional development for a superintendent, how is the way that we want to, to do that? Are we just saying it? Are we asking for some type of report? Are we...
It used to be a management limitation.
Okay.
Why wouldn't we ask for a summative report? It does not have to be extensive. In the last year, you did this professional development. Like, we're paying to go to Harvard, we're paying to go to conferences. Sum up in a nutshell what that has taught you this year and how you're bringing it into your management of the district.
Okay.
Yeah, in previous language, said the superintendent shall not operate without a professional development plan for the superintendent chiefs, teachers, and staff around outcomes related to cultural proficiency. So, I mean, we can adjust that.
Mm-hmm, okay. The other question, the other thing I did add, and I, I want, this is, and look, we have to get, I'm going to have, once it's cleaned up, Dr. Roberts has got to look at this, too, and raise any issues that he might have. The succession plan historically has just identified one person to step into his role. And yet, the district needs to have a succession plan in the case of, at, at a high level, just the...
Executive cabinet.
Executive cabinet. And so I think the request was a succession plan that identifies the person or persons prepared to step in temporarily for each of the executive cabinet members' role, cabinet members' roles.
Yes.
And the superintendent role.
Yes.
So you, sorry, for that one, that would be a management limitation?
I guess so. I mean, it's kind of, it's, it's almost like a to-do list of sorts, right?
We always got that before.
Yeah.
Well, we, yeah.
This is an annual, though, is it? I mean...
It's just supposed to be annual, right? And we were out of compliance for two years. And so what I, I added to it, which is why I'm calling it out. So I added that it should be the executive cabinet, not just the superintendent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I guess, I guess I'm not understand why that would be an annual document.
It's actually state law.
To have something in place, but to have, to have it every single year?
It's got to be reported out every year.
Every year, it's actually the law.
Yeah, you got to report it out every year.
Every year.
Yeah, it may not change, but...
It usually is just the same or worse.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
But think of this year to last year.
Right, I agree.
There will be, there will be, there will be some big changes. And if we had reported that out, we'd be not in compliance.
Yeah. Good, Skylar?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So again, I'm just kind of going through and calling out things that I think were significant. On page 12, number eight, the highlighted, um, this is Board of Education job responsibilities and expectations. Review board approved goals and guardrails to determine alignment with community vision and values every three years with the intention to keep, modify, or delete stated goals and guardrails. Now, I think the high level statement is, are we comfortable going, the expectation of going into the community at least every three years, are the parameters the correct parameters? Just goals and guardrails? Is, or do we need to change any of that?
It's the same process we went through two years ago every three years. But saying it, to me, it's saying that we are doing this every three years.
Yeah, and it's been, it's been in, in the past, too. I just want to make sure we don't need to change the, the parameters. Okay.
I'm sorry, just a really quick question. I know we used three years originally because that was SOFG. Does three years make sense for us now?
I think so. I think so, too.
Okay. Is there a reason why you think so?
I think like we could see that, because it took us like a full...
Six, eight months.
Six, eight months to go through the process. And then for we to get the language out and then for us to implement it. If we go shorter than that, I feel like we're just going in our own circles and we're not accomplishing anything.
Are you wondering about longer?
I was wondering longer. I, I, we've been monitoring and some of this is on an exponential growth. And I mean, it seems like a lot of other things are data driven, and this is just kind of an arbitrary number. So, I mean, I don't know what the number is, but I see three years. I'm just like, why is it three years besides the fact that it's always been three years? I mean, so I'm not advocating for a different number, I just don't know.
I don't either.
Oh, go ahead. I think if we, I would say, hmm, yes, for five years. But with the dynamic that we have, if we go longer than that, like how, are we going to have more success?
Well, my thing would be to ask the superintendent, say, how long does it truly take to see literacy change or to grow? I mean, to me, that would be, you would figure that out and then put the number in there.
He set, he set these numbers, so we...
He said realistically, what can be done in three years. He set the numbers. We just said we want to see literacy growth. They came back and said, what the number? So they set all their own, just so you know.
But three years was not SOFG.
We, we said three years. He could have said, I can raise it by 1% in three years. I could raise, I mean, he, he and his team came up with the numbers that they felt they could achieve in three years. And also, I, I want to say, we can go back and say, we're extending this. Like, we have flexibility to...
You can go in the community and say...
These are still the same right goals. We feel like we're not quite there, but we could get there if we have two more years. Shall we keep them? Which, so it could be a very fast process. But we did not tell him he needs to grow this number by 10% in three years.
And I, I don't want to combine both the length or the duration of a goal and, and the, the duration of time that the board goes between community engagement. Because I think those are two different things. And I would also offer that when we look at, um, what has happened in the last three years when it comes to what has greatly impacted, not so much, not as much the goals as the guardrails and where our focus has shifted in the last five, three to five years. There has been some drastic changes in what our students experience and what our families experience on a day-to-day basis that I, I think that if we do anything more than three years, we will not be responsive to that ever-changing climate that our, our students and families face.
Does three get you off-cycle with elections as well? So you're hitting a different, like, there are new board members? And are you rolling, are you going out for comment as new board members are coming on? And does that allow a new board member to, or a new group of board... or a new group of board members, that the ability to come in and if they don't feel like the direction is going the right way, go out for comment every three years rather than four? You could do it anytime you want, I suppose, but three feels right to me.
And I, I will also add that Marie and I have an upcoming meeting, like, within the next 10 days regarding community engagement and outreach. So if you want to, we can certainly look into this some more and discuss it.
The point, the most important point that you made is, they can run on different tracks, right? Going into the community every three years is, what we're saying is a mandate regardless of where we are, the goals. So, and we can come back to that, I think this is, it sounds like maybe let's think about it, both of you, and, and think about it a little bit more. I have a one on page 13, I just, first of all, if anybody, this board member code of conduct is like so long from past manuals. But this question, and Kim, maybe you know the genesis of this, about teacher pay, about employee, DMPS board members, sorry. DMPS board members getting paid. So this is on page 13 at the bottom. So the statutory limit in Iowa code was recently increased to $20,000. The board can choose to stick with 2,500, which is the maximum that a board member could make if they were employed with DMPS. I guess maybe as a sub or something like that. But we can raise it to $20,000. I don't care. Does anybody want, do we want to just keep it at 2,500?
Stay down, I would stay.
Yeah, I think it's a, a com, a larger conflict, the more money that you are making. I think this amount allows someone to be a coach or a sub here and there, but not
This is a rural district issue.
Yeah. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. The, okay, let's see where we want to go next. I, page 16, I just, I need some quick guidance because there's a lot about board members being contacted by DMPS staff. And I want to say two things about it. One, Miriam and I have talked, and I need, now that Dr. Roberts has settled in with Josie, we are going to request to the board, assuming I have your support, the anonymous reporting
Hotline.
Function hotline, yep, so it's pretty common practice, especially for a district this size. Now, how and when that's used is up to Josie and Miriam. But part, part of what I think is going to be important is directing people to the right things because I think right now we struggle, we get the emails, we get the phone calls, those tend to get higher priority. So as a board, when we get inquiries, we currently, and I, I think I was just performing based on, you know, the, the historic precedent of the board chair responds, and then Dr. Roberts is always supposed to be on it and directed to do something about it. I think he hasn't complained. I don't know why he hasn't complained, because it's just a lot of stuff. And so I've been thinking about different ways that we might be able to make it, make the process fair also, like, what if somebody doesn't send? Some people go and they submit a, like a survey, you know, you go to the website and they fill out a form, and it goes through a process. And so I'm just trying to figure out, is there any way, this is, there's staff, and then there's, you know, parents, I guess, and community. Can we think, does anybody have thoughts about how, what we do with our emails and phone calls and how we elevate them and what we choose to elevate?
I think it would be, especially for me, a lot of the information or emails or phone calls I get, I don't see it going right away directly to Dr. Roberts. I think it, there's a chain of command. And that's one thing I always ask, you know, have you talked to this person? And half the time, it's like, no, they're upset. So right away, they see me, and then so they'll text, or they'll send a message. What would be helpful for me as a board member would have kind of that chain of command.
To who to send them to. Some school districts have that on their website.
So we could just see Dr. Roberts in it, just for FLY.
Yep.
Well, I, to be clear, I think the, the, we have to not interact with, I think it is important to respect unless Dr. Roberts give permission that we don't interact directly with staff. Right? So I think that, I do appreciate that line.
I think that's the conundrum, and I also feel like, and I think it's probably about the question with Dr. Roberts, because when we get a complaint directly, it's hot on our mind. And if I was Dr. Roberts and I knew that you had got the complaint, but you were trying to send people through the channels, but it's in the back of your mind, non-away, and you're expecting something, I think he'd want to know that we know, right? I mean, I do feel like there is a little bit of like a, he should know what we're going to throw at him or be thinking about when we bring things to the table. So I feel like it's worth asking him if he
Oh, yeah.
wants to be in the know with things that come our way, because I
Well, he said yes, so I mean, I think
Yeah, is our current process not working?
Oh, great, valid point.
I think the only thing I would say is that it feels like the people who email or the people who call get the attention.
And maybe that's just because we only know it too, Jackie. I don't, I don't, is that fair to say? Do we know people who don't email and call are getting less attention?
I think we don't know how the
Forums, yeah.
Forum system works. So, and, and they try to drive people to the forums. So maybe we put this in the, let's talk to, let's, let's just have a discussion about it, learn more about the forums. If Doc, if this is the way Dr. Roberts wants to do it, that's fine. But I, I do think there is a little bit of, some of this stuff, I do think a flow chart would be helpful, right? So, so we can also tell them, have you, this is your chain of command, but
It would also be nice from
Maybe it's, if it's a non-issue, let's not, let's move on.
It would be nice from a, an efficiency standpoint, and I, I don't, I'm not proposing we do this necessarily, but it'd be really nice to know with that hotline and with emails and if there was some way to see a responsiveness number for the district.
We've received that in the past.
Yeah, I think that was one of the things.
Tickets closed percentage and the
I, like, I'm, I'm a little, that's why I'm a little hesitant to do it, because if you just say, here, do tickets closed? I'm going to close those tickets as fast as I can to make a number, you know?
So let's quickly talk about staff, okay? Because when staff bring concerns, I think at least, and Kim, this is a question, because I said, if we elevate the concern, then I tend to try to take off that person's name. And I'm wondering if that, Kim, did you have a question about that, about whether or not?
Going to my notes.
Yeah. I mean, or should we just assume if they're sending it to the board that we forwarded on? I mean, there's a, there's been a lot of dis, and I think part of, part of the hotline conversation was if there were any concerns around retaliation, if somebody has complaints, that's why you have a hotline.
Do we have a whistleblower statute in the state, don't we?
Pretty sure.
Don't we?
And do you have any thoughts on this?
Only that we've already had conversations about kind of just in general retaliation with Josie. You're more likely to get lose your job because of retaliation than you are for something that you actually, like, that happened. And just that, like, it's not
Would it be helpful?
Not really, yeah. I just think that, like, if staff, when you're talking, can I just ask a clarified question? Are you talking about like when you email, like, when someone emails board@, right?
A staff person.
Yeah, and then they, and that goes to the whole board at the same time.
Yeah, and our process
I just assumed that Dr. Roberts is on that too.
No.
Oh, okay.
So our process, we haven't been consistent. I think depending upon what's been written, I've tried to be sensitive to not elevate a staff name. And I mean, I think that's really the question. I mean, but knowing that there's an alternative option for some, I mean, I think that, the thing that Miriam's saying is right now, we have no mechanism in place for anybody to provide anonymous feedback.
Yeah, I think if a, if, if a staff member is emailing the board, then they are emailing us on the record.
Yes.
And unless they, unless they formally say, like, I would like to talk with you off the record, then if they're emailing us to our district email, that is on the record.
Okay, that's, is everybody good with that?
I believe. Yeah, I, I do as well. I mean, like, they have to know that that's been to a FOIA request.
Yeah, okay.
My bigger problem is
Especially like if I'm emailing you all at the same time, right? Instead of like reaching out to, let's say, Kim, who is my district.
My bigger problem is how do we, what policy, what, I'm sorry, what standard operating procedure can help alleviate the cultural perception that if you raise a concern, you are more likely to get fired or moved or, you know, whatever. I, that's the, that's a, that's to me a cultural piece.
That's, let's park that, because that's actually, I think, a broader topic that Miriam and Josie want to have around kind of the culture
Yep.
and why some type of hotline might be helpful. So I say true to my word, we said nine o'clock, and it's just about nine o'clock. So here's what I'm going to recommend.
I sent you four things
Thank you.
to consider putting somewhere from our former governance manual, that I do not believe are in this governance.
Thank you very much for that. I actually think that some of these things with a quick Google Doc, Google Form, I can probably get feedback from some people on some of the things, and then next time we meet, we'll have aggregated feedback that we can review on some of these things that, like, the full list of personnel, the conversation about contracts, like, there's certain things that we said were important that I think we'll try and get some consensus on. I need a volunteer for somebody. The board code of conduct is so long. Is it, I mean, does it need to be that, is that typical, that it needs to be that?
Was that the lawyers getting involved?
Thank you, Kim. It's just a lot, and I wonder if it's so long that you don't even read it. But
We need to know.
We, I know we went all over the place. I think to bring it, wrap it back up, I think what we said is, we started by talking about the different types of manuals. I think where we've landed is a a hybrid model. A governance model that has ends and means, that will always prioritize student outcomes and lead with student outcomes, but also within its purve, purview, will have other things as it pertains to the district. And I think that, and this is something Kim and I talked about, I think once we settle in, there may be some growth each year. So, you know, maybe next year, we're not looking at all the contracts, right? Like, some of these management limitations that are put in place now, you can remove them. And maybe that's a growth goal, is fewer management limitations over time.
And I would just have one addition. When it comes to, when we get to the point of approving this operating procedure, we're going to have to give some guidance to Dr. Roberts and team. So making sure that, you know, if Jackie, it's you and me or whomever, that we don't just stop in October at approval of this, we need to make sure that the superintendent is also aware of what we expect on the monitoring calendar, what we expect annually from, from them and their, just so that we feel that not only we've codified it, but we're also getting what we need from them.
I would say, I think that's a great point. I would say that the conversation today on budget left me feeling like we're not clear enough. And so maybe Patrick, you look like you're volunteering to help. And maybe Skylar, would you mind working with Patrick or Kim? Like, we, I just, I think it's not clear, and I think if it's not clear, we're not starting off on the right foot.
Yeah.
But so I volunteer the two of you to come, because I think, to your point, Kim, the, what we say and maybe what they do, we got to make sure we're in sync. And so however we can get as precise as possible, so expectations are met, I think
Even if it is a flow chart that says, all right, in monitoring report one, you gave a strategy A. We accepted that report, that strategy is going to be implemented. And that means that strategy A is going to show up in our budget conversation, not only with resource allocation, but also what is strategic abandonment in order to have that allocation occur, or, you know.
Yeah, it works. I'll reach out to Shashank after this.
Okay, team, thank you very much. We're going to close this work session, and we will be back together again in two weeks. So I believe it's two weeks, right, Rosie? Okay, thanks, everybody.
Sixteen.